They will destroy their breach seconds later. This selective outrage is outrageous and needs to stop and need to stop now. These people you watch on your screens for a few minutes a day, every night, while they are being slaughtered. They have survived decades of military occupation. A 16-years-long blockade and five wars in the Gaza Strip. They built and rebuilt and rebuilt their lives and their homes again and again, against all odds, despite tremendous suffering. They are walking miracles. How could you leave them to be killed once again? The answer to the killing of Palestinian civilians is not the killing of Israeli civilians. And the answer to the killing of Israeli civilians is not the killing of Palestinian civilians. Vengeance is a dead end. The only path forward is justice. The only path forward is justice. Justice for the Palestinian people. Don't distort the law. Don't bend it. Don't break it. Don't betray it to accommodate Israel. Uphold it and uphold it high. This is what we are here for as a United Nations. To save future generations from the scourge of war. Uphold it for the sake of all nations, for the credibility of these United Nations. Mr. President, Wael Dahdouh was reporting on the massacres in Gaza. For those of you who do not, who is Wael Dahdouh? He is the field correspondent of Al Jazeera in the Gaza Strip. As he's been doing relentlessly for days now, when he received the news of an Israeli airstrike that killed his wife, his son, and his daughter. He did something many parents do in these circumstances. He spoke to his son, waiting for an answer that never came. He told him, "Didn't you tell me you wanted to be a journalist?" His son wanted to be a journalist, even though journalists are targets in Palestine. Remember Shereen Abaakli? Now, the dream of the son will haunt the father. Wael said a few words that I want you to hear well. He said, "They took their vengeance out on our children." He then said in a heartbreaking voice, "Malish, allow me to explain it to you." Literally, it means "that's okay." But let me tell you what I believe he meant. Let me do it in Arabic.
What a world where Gaza is being killed again before the cameras of the world. Shame on all those who do not respect our humanity, our dignity, our suffering. All those who justify the acts of the killer instead of standing by the victim. To all those who justify the crime and give condolences to the victim and explain that the killer is not responsible for the killing. Shame to all those who do not stand by our people in Gaza and put an end to the massacre. Shame to this forum if a word of truth is not pronounced on it. Shame to the one who will speak after me to defend the wrong and justify the killing of innocent people. There is no justice on this earth. We have God. We have only God to go to.
Finally, I appeal to all of you. Vote to stop the killing. Vote for humanitarian aid to reach those whose very survival depends on it. Vote to stop this madness. You have a chance to do something, to give an important signal. Choose justice, not vengeance. Choose to defend the law, not justify its breach. Choose peace, not more wars. Vote to put an end to two, almost three weeks of the worst double standards we have seen in decades. To restore some credibility of this place and the rules it is supposed to embody. Do not miss this chance. Lives are hanging in the balance and every life is sacred. Please, save lives, save lives, save lives. Vote for our draft resolution and I thank you.
I now give the floor to the distinguished Deputy Prime Minister. I now give the floor to Israel.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Distinguished colleagues, we are gathered here in this hall today as a result of a resolution called "Uniting for Peace." Sadly, this emergency session has nothing to do with peace. Every member state here today who is convinced that we are about to discuss yet another round of conflict in the Middle East, another dispute between Israel and the Palestinians, is wrong. The October 7th massacre and what ensued has nothing to do with the Palestinians. Nothing. It has nothing to do with the Arab-Israeli conflict or the Palestinian question. This is not a war with the Palestinians. Israel is at war with the genocidal jihadist Hamas terror organization. Only. It is the law-abiding democracy of Israel against modern-day Nazis. These are the facts. Hamas do not care about the Palestinian people. They do not care about peace or dialogue. Hamas has only one goal: to annihilate Israel and murder every single Jew on the face of the earth. Their original charter makes this very clear. I'll read you a few lines. "Israel will exist and will continue to exist until Islam will obliterate it." Another quote, "There is no solution for the Palestinian problem except by jihad." Another quote, "The day of judgment will not come about until Muslims fight Jews and kill them." Friends, on October 7th, it became clear to the entire world that Hamas's charter, a compilation of empty words. It was an action plan, an action plan. Imagine a bright sunny day, clear skies, music in the air. Young people are dancing a rave, a concert for peace. Yes, for peace. It is really, it is early morning on the holy Sabbath. The sun is just reason to mark a new day. It is also a festive Jewish high holiday, Simchat Torah. Simchat Torah means the joy of the Torah, where we celebrate the book of books, our holy Bible. And then, in one split second, this idyllic Eden became hell on earth. The peaceful morning air was pierced with the wail of rocket sirens. Thousands, I'm telling you, thousands of Hamas mortars and rockets rained down indiscriminately on many Israeli cities and villages. But the rockets were only covered for the pogrom, the pogrom that followed. Barbaric Hamas terrorists invaded Israel from the sea, the land, and the air. They came with one purpose, one purpose only: to savagely murder every living thing they encountered. Hamas Nazi murders went from house to house with hit lists. A thoroughly planned, willful, premeditated attack. They brutally murdered civilians in their beds. They drove pickup trucks with machine guns, yes. We all remember, just like ISIS. And fired blindly at hundreds of young people at a concert. Three hundred, three hundred were burned alive or butchered in that concert. Much of what remained were clumps of flesh and bloody limbs. Parents had to bring their children's toothbrushes for DNA so they could figure out whose limb belonged to who. These Hamas monsters raped women and children, parading naked girls that they raped and bodied, that they defiled through the streets of Gaza. Why, thousands, and I'm telling you, thousands, you can see the footage, jeered and cheered. The savages tortured small babies, just like the Nazis. Hamas terrorists removed infants from their cribs. Yes, we have it on video. Swung them repeatedly against the ground until their skulls became a pulp. Children were murdered in front of their parents and parents in front of their children. I've seen a video of a terrorist filmed by him, by himself, who tossed a grenade into a bomb shelter with a father and his two young boys inside. The father was killed instantly and the two boys ran out of the shelter screaming that their father is dead and that they want to be dead too. All this is occurring, believe it or not, as the monster who murdered their father calmly helps himself to the contents of the family's fridge. Yes. No horror movie compares to the pure brutality that Hamas carried out. No, none. Amit Man, a 22-year-old from Kibbutz Be'eri and a paramedic for Magen David Adom, Israel's Red Cross. She dedicated her life, literally, and you will understand why, to saving others. When the Hamas monsters invaded the kibbutz, Amit ran to the clinic to treat as many wounded as she could. For hours, hours, Amit worked nonstop trying to save lives. She knew the sadistic terrorists were outside her clinic because she heard the gunfire, but she stayed there. She was committed to saving lives, not running away. Finally, the terrorist burst into her clinic and put a bullet, a bullet, through her brain. She was a Magen David Adom paramedic, the Israeli Red Cross, in uniform. But that didn't stop these savages. This is how the rescue teams found Amit. Ambulances were set on fire, not one, many. Dozens of Magen David Adom medical teams were intentionally targeted on their way to tend to the wounded. And many other paramedics were murdered. Barzilai Hospital in my hometown city, Ashkelon, in Israel, suffered direct hits from Hamas rockets. Not for the first time. Hamas has been deliberately firing rockets at it for years, as long as they are not Israeli. The hypocrisy is beyond belief, beyond belief. The brutal ISIS-like monsters abducted over 220 hostages from Israel and dozens of other countries, including babies, babies, children, persons with disabilities, the elderly, and Holocaust survivors. Kfir Bibas, Kfir Bibas is nine months old. Nine months old and he is being held right now in Gaza as a hostage. What barbaric terrorist can do such a thing? And together with him, 30 other children, 30 other children. We saw Hamas's brutality in Israel. I cannot begin to fathom what horrors the hostages are enduring right now as we speak here. Twenty days have gone by and Israel is still counting her dead. Looking at, yet after a city scan, it became clear that there were two spines, not one, two spines bound together with wire. One belonging to an adult and the other, the small spine of a child. So just try to imagine that parents, that parent's feeling as they and their child were burning alive, burning alive. The painful screaming of the love of their life was the last thing they heard, the last thing. Do you not think it's unbelievable that this resolution here today and this session are not solely focused on Hamas's atrocities? When reading this resolution, Hamas seems to be missing in action. The drafters of the resolution claim to be concerned about peace. Yet, the depraved murderers who initiated this war are not even mentioned in the resolution, not even mentioned. They see each one of you as puppet. They write a resolution completely devoid of any content related to the situation. They assume that you have already forgotten who it is that is responsible for the inhumane violence and they just expect you to support it automatically. This resolution is a disgrace to your intelligence, a disgrace. It is unfathomable that such a resolution, one that doesn't even mention Hamas, could possibly be voted upon here. Let that sink in, please. Distinguished representatives, representatives. Hamas carried out atrocities, the likes of which we have not seen since the Holocaust. Yet, unlike the Holocaust, where the evidence we have is mostly black and white photographs and soundless footage, here, the proof is in high definition. Because some of it is from, yes, security footage, but much of it is from the cell phones and GoPro cameras belonging to the Hamas Nazis themselves. Many may be asking, "Why did they film their sadistic violence?" Well, I'll tell you why, very simple. They filmed it in order to terrorize the Israeli public, to release these videos and put fear in the hearts of the citizens of Israel. By the way, this is what terrorists do, they terrorize. I have seen much footage over the past weeks that will be seared into my mind forever. But there is one sight that I keep on seeing when I try to sleep. In the video, one can see a terrible injured civilian, bloodied yet alive, laying on the ground as a Hamas savage screaming "Allahu Akbar", repeatedly pummels the man's neck with a garden hoe in order to decapitate him. The man on the ground is an agricultural worker from Thailand. He's not Israeli, he's not Jewish. He was merely alive trying to make a living for his family. But he was decapitated with a blunt gardening tool. Horrifying. Israel is not at war with human beings. We are at war with monsters. Here is the video. We should distribute, the new to distribute are codes with a direct link to files where you can see this horror and many other Hamas atrocities. What you see here are not pictures from Auschwitz, but Israelis raped, butchered, and burned alive. This is not Auschwitz. This is us. Words in the English language, in any type of evil that we all just witnessed. And the reason it is not describable is because it has no place among human mind. Over four have been slaughtered, thousand injured, and over 220 hostages are being held right now by Hamas ISIS terrorists. To say that this is Israel's 9/11 would be an understatement. Proportionally, the death toll of this atrocity is 15 times bigger than 9/11. By the way, our enemies are not 7,000 miles away. They are 7,000 feet away in our own backyard. So for this reason, Israel's mission is to eradicate this evil from the earth. Eradicate. ISIS was the Islamic State of Iraq and Syria and Hamas is the Islamic State of Gaza. So just as was done with ISIS, Hamas must be no more. Our goal is to completely eradicate Hamas's capabilities and we will use every means at our disposal to accomplish this. Not for revenge, no. Not for retaliation, no. But to ensure that such depravity, such atrocities, never occurs again. Israel is at the forefront of the war on radical jihadist terror. And if Israel doesn't succeed in obliterating, obliterating Hamas's terror capabilities, the whole world will pay the price. Hamas's genocidal ideology, just like ISIS, Al Qaeda, or the Ayatollah regime in Tehran of Iran, is not just about destroying Israel. You all know it. It is ultimately about world domination, world. It is about bringing the jihad war to the soil of each and every one of your countries. They will not stop until they murder all of the infidels, as they call us. Colleagues, for the past 16 years, the international community and the UN have been complacent to Hamas's terror buildup in Gaza, complacent. The world has kept its head in the sand as Hamas embedded its missiles and rockets deep within and under the civilian population of Gaza. It accepted an absurd reality that a law-abiding democracy could live side by side with cancerous genocidal terrorists that fire tens of thousands of missiles indiscriminately at our civilians, unprovoked. We have seen that nothing can change Hamas's genocidal ideology. Not sadly, not the rehabilitation of Gaza, not economic incentives, not any promise of a brighter future. The UN tried, many of you tried, but everyone failed. Everyone failed and you know why? Because nothing can change a genocidal ideology, nothing. There is only one solution to cutting, curing a cancer. It is the evisceration of every cancerous cell. The international community has poured billions of dollars into Gaza and it all went to Hamas's war machine. It went to its subterranean city of terror. It went to its missile manufacturing facilities. And you remember, 18 years ago, Israel unilaterally withdrew from all of Gaza. We withdrew from all of Gaza. Hamas could have invested the international funding it received into building power plants, water desalination plants, every other civil infrastructure. But no. Instead, Hamas exploited every inch of the Gaza Strip for their violent goals. Because to Hamas, Gazan civilians are nothing more than mere cannon fodder, human shields who in death become pawns for Hamas's libelous propaganda campaign. Hamas is counting on you. They are certain that despite the terror and massacre, the UN will still come to their rescue and prevent Israel from defending itself. Friends, Israel is on a rescue mission. A rescue mission to save our hostages, to save our future and to save the people of Gaza from their savage tyrants. A rescue mission. And colleagues, the rescue mission can end quickly. Now, it can end now. No need for complicated, empty resolutions. It can end now. Should Hamas put down their arms, return our hostages, and turn themselves in, this war will end without one more shot being fired, not even one. Why do you not unite and call on Hamas to do this? If the drafters of this resolution truly wants one peace, if they truly want an immediate solution, then why do they not demand this of Hamas? Instead, this resolution does the exact opposite of finding a solution. The exact opposite. Rather than promoting peace, it only ensures more violence. It should be called "Uniting for Terror," not "Uniting for Peace." Israel has been attacked and continues to be attacked. This is a fact, right now, in the south from Hamas and in the north from Hezbollah. Meanwhile, the resolution calls for an immediate ceasefire. A ceasefire means giving Hamas time to rearm itself so they can massacre us again. This is not speculation, they will do so, you all know this. Any call for a ceasefire is not an attempt at peace. It is an attempt to tie Israel's hands, preventing us from eliminating a huge threat to our citizens. But the resolution's distortions go even deeper than that. Hamas, the terror group that started this war, I reiterate, is not even mentioned, not even once. In fact, the only hidden reference to these barbaric terrorists can be found in calls on both parties. Both parties? This is a false immoral comparison between the law-abiding democracy of Israel and a genocidal jihadist. And the drafters are counting on the fact that each and every distinguished representative here will blindly go along with their ploy. This resolution is an insult to your intelligence and the only place this resolution belongs is in the dustbin of history, the dustbin of history. But colleagues, this resolution is not the only thing here today that is detached from reality. In a short time... In a short time, a representative of the evil regime that trained, funded, and armed Hamas massacre will address you. The Ayatollah regime of Iran has the blood of thousands of Israelis on its hands. It has the blood of hundreds of thousands of oppressed Iranians, of Ukrainians, of Americans, of Emiratis, and so many others on its hands. Iran is known as the world’s number-one state sponsor of terror, and for good reasons. It’s completely natural that the foreign minister of this brutal regime should be the speaker following the resolution drafter. The country with a Nazi ideology of annihilating Israel publicly says stands in solidarity with its proxy Hamas, which shares the same Nazi ideology and aims for our destruction. This is completely understandable. Indeed, mere days ago, he spoke with the leaders of Hamas and its twin terror group Palestinian Islamic Jihad, praising them, praising them for the slaughter. And today, he is here to fill your ears with poison. Indeed, uniting for peace, uniting to butcher every Israeli to pieces. This man, the mass murderer, or any other representative of the terror regime in Iran has no place at the UN, let alone in the family of nations. It is a moral stain on the UN and the values it was founded upon. Distinguished colleagues, this week, the UN celebrated its 78th birthday. Yet, looking at this resolution and the honorary guests hosted it today in these halls, this organization has shown that it is so broken, so morally corrupt, that I do not have high hopes that it will make it to 90, let alone 100. I’m just a realist. Today serves as the clearest proof that this body is bleeding its relevance, legitimacy, and justification. What we are witnessing today is a desecration, a desecration of what the UN was meant to be. Following the horrors of the Holocaust, this institution was established to prevent atrocities from repeating themselves. Yet, in these very halls, we have perpetrators of the most grotesque human rights violations and crimes against humanity who also exploit their power and... Don’t stand with the genocidal jihadists committed to your destruction. Rise above internal political considerations and do what is moral and right. Mr. President, Israel will not stop fighting for the truth, even if we remain the sole voice of reason in these halls. Israel will continue combating the genocidal terrorists committed to our destruction. We will not rest until Hamas is obliterated and our hostages are returned home. And we will bring them home. I will conclude with a moment of silence for all the victims of Hamas’s atrocity. If the supporters of this resolution choose to ignore the victims in their text, I will pay respect to their memory. Thank you, Mr. President.
I now give the floor to the distinguished Deputy Prime Minister and Minister of Foreign Affairs and Ex-Patriot of the Kingdom of Jordan, His Excellency Ayman Safadi, on behalf of the Arab Group.
Bismillah, rahman, rahim. Mr. President, dear friends, it is at such times of cruelty, inhumanity, and total disregard for international law that we must speak out clearly and unequivocally. There is no room for gray areas here. We must stand for life, for justice, for peace. We must stand against this war in Gaza and the humanitarian catastrophe it is causing. We must stand on the side of our human values and for the Charter of these United Nations. History will judge us. Let us not fail the Palestinian people. A besieged people, an occupied people, whose days start with death and end with death, whose nights are engulfed by a total blackout, punctured only by the lightening of Israeli missiles, taking away their lives, shattering their dreams, killing their hope. Say no to war. Say no to the killing. Call out war crimes. Defend the right of Palestinian children, women, the elderly, to food, to water, to medicine, to fuel. Speak out against using starvation as a weapon. Children are falling dead under the rubble of homes destroyed by Israeli precision bombs. Some are still alive, under the rubble. There is no sufficient equipment to pull them out. Their parents can still hear them. They talk to them helplessly, knowing that they are running out of air and are slowly dying. Children who may miraculously survive face dehydration and starvation. Israel has killed over 7,000 innocent Palestinians since this new vicious cycle of violence and war erupted on October 7. These are people with names, with faces, with memories, and loved ones left behind. Among them, 16 health workers, 39 on Rwastaf, 22 journalists. Wael Dahdouh, a journalist, had his eight children separated in three different houses so they are not all killed at the same time if it gets bombed. Yesterday, his wife, Amina, Amina, 45 years old. His son Mahmoud, 16 years old. His daughter Sham, seven years old. And his infant grandson, Adam, 50 days old. Hear me well. Forty-five days old were stolen from him by Israel’s war. They are not soldiers. And yet, at the going down of the sun and in the morning, we will remember them. Israeli government, who has cabinet members who openly, shamingly call for wiping out Palestinians from the face of this earth, call them animals unworthy of life, tells you this is not a war on the Palestinian people. If it is not, then why on earth did they kill Adam?
Upon them and upon all of those who have ascended to the heavens, may God’s blessings remain.
One doctor in Gaza describes how a boy with injuries and facial burns told them how his house was hit after finishing a meal with his parents. His father, sitting next to him, he says, was killed outright. His mother suffocated in the smoke. I don’t have videos to show you. We respect the dead too much. We respect the pain of their families too much to show videos. But check out your mobiles. Thousands of videos depicting the abomination, the horror, the inhumanity, the inhumanity to which thousands of Palestinians are being subjected and have been subjected. Israel is making Gaza a perpetual hell on earth. The trauma will haunt generations to come. And dear friends, don’t be fooled. Don’t let them tell you that this is a war between Muslims and Jews. I stand before you as a Jordanian, as an Arab, as a Muslim, and I tell you, we value life, Muslim life, Christian life, Jewish life. We value the sanctity of life. The Israeli representative did not say a word about Palestinian lives shattered in this war. Yet the Palestinian one before him, and I do, and I say, we care about all lives, about all civilians, Muslims, Christians, Palestinians, Jews, Israelis, all lives. Don’t let them tell you otherwise. This is what an insult to intelligence is. Dear friends, rage must not blind us to the futility of violence. It must not desensitize us to the pain of fellow human beings. We condemn the killing of all civilians, no matter their race, their identity, their nationality, or their religion, because these are our human values. And this is our morality. Israel must uphold these values too. How many wars? How much death has our region suffered? And what good did that do? All of us. It did not bring security to Israel. It will not. It did not bring security to any of us. My friends, the right to self-defense is not a license to kill with impunity. Collective punishment is not self-defense. It is a war crime. We must say it as it is. We must refuse the double standards and selective application of international law. Israel cannot remain above the law. Dear friends, a just and lasting peace is the best defense for all. Let the guns go silent, and let the will to live and let live prevail. Let’s restore faith in the peace process as the only path to ending this conflict once and for all. Many among us believe that they are helping Israel by supporting its war. They are not. Instead of sending weapons to Israel, send delegations to open an immediate and viable path to peace. This is how they help Israel. And many among us too feel that they are doing their ethical and legal duty towards Palestinians by urging humanitarian supplies to be sent to them and not urging an end of this war. They are not doing their duty towards Palestinians. Responsibility demands, responsibility towards Palestinians demands that they work for their protection, for peace. Peace that will ensure a viable, independent, sovereign Palestinian state with occupied Jerusalem as its capital on June 4, 1967, living side by side a secure Israel, so that Palestinians live free from occupation and its indignity, so that no Palestinian or Israeli mother has to once again mourn her child. Ladies and gentlemen, Jordan, on behalf of the Arab countries, will put forward a draft resolution. We do so after the United Nations Security Council did not fulfill its responsibility. The draft resolution simply seeks what our United Nations was established to achieve: peace and compliance with international law. We all know Israel will ignore it. It did ignore many, many, many UN resolutions before. And yet, vote for it. Vote for it. Make a stand. Ladies and gentlemen, a month ago, His Majesty King Abdullah II stood before this very assembly. His works, his words echoed through then. They are even more relevant now. He said, and I quote, “Our region will not continue to suffer until the world helps lift the shadow of the Palestinian-Israeli conflict, the central issue in the Middle East. No architecture for regional security and development can stand over the burning ashes of this conflict. But seven and a half decades on, it still smoulders. Where are we going?” Dear friends, let’s make a collective cry, a cry out again against more bloodletting. Let’s unite for peace. Let’s unite for justice. Let’s unite for the right of every Palestinian and every Israeli child to live, free from the horrors of war, free from fear, and looking for a life full of promise and full of opportunity. For the sake of the Palestinian people and for the sake of the Israeli people, vote yes. And contrary to what you just heard, the resolution does recognize the pain and the killing on the Israeli side as well. The resolution does condemn the killing of Palestinian and Israeli civilians. Don’t be fooled. My friend, let the passing of the draft resolution be a message to Palestinians suffering the inferno, the inferno of this Israeli war on them. Let it be a message that the international community sees them, feel their pains, that Palestinian lives matter too. Make a stand for peace. Make a stand for life. Make it clear. Make it firm. And before I, I too, went to call for a moment of silence. But not just for one side or the other. I want to call for a moment of silence for all the civilians, for all the innocents who fell in ugly, abominable war. Thank you so much.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Kingdom of Jordan, and I now give the floor to His Excellency Hussein Amir Abdullahian, the Minister of Foreign Affairs of the Islamic Republic of Iran.
In the name of God, Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen, I thank Your Excellency for holding this meeting. The world knows that the Islamic Republic of Iran plays the most constructive role in helping peace and security, as well as fighting terrorism and ISIS. Mr. President, it has been three weeks that we have been witness to the war crimes and genocide of the occupying Israeli regime in Gaza and the West Bank of Palestine. The United States and several European countries have sided with the occupying regime of Israel without observing the UN Charter and international law. They call a Palestinian liberation movement a terrorist, which has the right to self-defense and self-determination. But they refer to a criminal regime that is committing genocide in Gaza and having the right to self-defense. Unfortunately, this is the state of our world today. This is the situation of the Security Council, which was supposed to try to establish world peace peace and security. Today, United States and several European countries are watching and supporting the killing of about 7,000 civilians in less than three weeks by the Israeli regime in Gaza and West Bank of Palestine. And they helped this regime militarily and financially. We recommend the United States to work for peace and security, not war against people, children, and women. Instead of sending rockets, tanks, and bombs to be used against Gaza, United States should stop supporting genocide in Gaza and Palestine, Mr. President. The history of Iranian civilization shows that we have always supported peace and security. But today in New York and the United Nations, I say frankly to the American statesmen, who are now managing the genocide in Palestine, that we do not welcome to expansion of the war in the region. But I warn, if the genocide in Gaza continues, they will not be spared from this fire. It is our home, and West Asia is our region. We do not compromise with any party and any side, and we have no reservation when it comes to our home's security. The genocide in Gaza must stop immediately. The forced displacement of the people of Gaza must be stopped immediately. Today Gaza is waiting for urgent and vital humanitarian aid. According to international law, the Palestinian liberation movement Hamas is fighting the occupation and has a legitimate right, Mr. President. According to our negotiations, Hamas is ready to release civilian prisoners. On the other hand, the world should support the release of 6,000 Palestinians held in Israeli prisons. Now, allow me to continue the rest of my remark in the Persian language.
Mr. President, according to history and based on documents of the United Nations, the Palestinian issue has a history of about 80 years. Therefore, trying, trying to reduce its dimensions to just one attack and on a Palestinian liberation group is a big lie. According to the international law, as well as hundreds of resolutions of this very same assembly, the entire land of Palestine is an occupied land, and according to this, the Zionist regime is recognized as an aggressor and an occupier. The Palestinian nation, like any other nation under occupation, has the indisputable and inherent right of self-determination and has the right to directly and freely decide on its independence and to create an independent government to decide for itself, according to international law. And as specified by Security Council Resolutions Number 309 and 323 of 1972, of the United, of the Security Council, in the case of Namibia, the inalienable right to self-determination and independence is permanent and does not disappear with the passage of time. Therefore, just as the prolonged occupation of the land does not create any rights for the occupier, the passage of time does not diminish the slightest, in the slightest way, the right to determine the fate of the occupied nation. According to the principles and rules of the international law and hundreds of resolutions of this very same assembly, the Palestinian nation, as a nation under occupation, has the legitimate right to resist the occupation using all available methods, including armed struggle. Therefore, the recent hypocritical efforts to introduce the struggle of the Palestinian nation against the occupiers as terrorist actions will not deceive the free nations and the awakened consciousnesses of the world. The United States, the United States of America, as the unwavering and permanent supporter of the occupying regime, is the main cause of the failures of the United Nations, especially the Security Council, in upholding the rights of the Palestinians. The country has for dozens of times prevented the Security Council from fulfilling its duties in this field. Mr. President, we believe that the complete and comprehensive solution to the Palestinian issue is only possible through the full realization of the inalienable right of this nation to self-determination and the establishment of an independent Palestinian state in all of the Palestinian territories and with Al-Quds as its capital. The entire land of Palestine, from the sea to the river, belongs only to the original Palestinians, including Christians, Jews, and Muslims. And no institution or country has the right or can given any part of it, of this land, to another person or group. The Islamic Republic, the Islamic Republic of Iran believes in the right of Palestine to resist against occupation, has offered a political and democratic initiative, which includes the holding of a referendum for self-determination amongst the original residents of Palestine, including Jews, Christians, and Muslims, which has been registered by the UN as well. The essence and nature of the Zionist regime is based on aggression, occupation, crime, lies, and deception. So far, this regime has launched more than 20 wars in the region, invaded, without any exception, all its neighbors, attacked a number of countries outside its immediate region and neighborhood, and it still occupies the territory of some other Arab countries in addition to Palestine. It has committed all the four main international crimes, namely aggression, war crimes, crimes against humanity, and genocides. But many times, and in some cases, all four crimes simultaneously. And to advance his illegitimate goals, it has failed to adhere to any humane or legal, any humane principles or legal rules. Ladies and gentlemen, we must see reality as it is. And the reality is that brutal occupation and brutal and deep apartheid, it is this terrible, deep apartheid that gives the occupying regime the psychological depression to butcher. Therefore, now is the time to consider the real face of this regime. It did in 1975 through Zionism as apartheid and racism. Mr. President, I would like to emphasize that the recent action of the Palestinian nation, as well as the action of the liberation organization of Hamas against the occupiers, according to the applicable rules of the international law, is completely legitimate and inherent right, and attributing any other title to it is absolutely illegal and unacceptable. Claims such as the right of the so-called legitimate defense should be granted to the occupying regime is also a very ridiculous joke. It is certainly not possible to change the places of the killer and the victim by, by misusing some expressions. The Al-Aqsa storm operation is just a reaction to the continuation of occupation and the aggressions against the Palestinians and in response to the widespread crimes of the Zionist regime in recent months. In fact, this operation was the volcanic operation, was the volcanic eruption of the concentrated anger of the entire Palestinian nation against 75 years of continuous and widespread crimes by the Zionist regime, especially in recent months by the Netanyahu government. According to international law, resisting aggression and occupation, including by armed means, is the inherent and legitimate right of the Palestinian, of any nation, including the Palestinian nation. And it does not require the permission or order of any country or institution to exercise it. The, the place and how to exercise this right was, is based on the recognized international law. Those who repeatedly speak about the necessity of avoidance of an expansion of this conflict, and of course, the Islamic Republic of Iran, we have never been after the expansion or the spread of war, and we will never be supporting it. But if, in the truest sense of the word, they don't want this war to spread out, they need to pressure the Zionist regime to fully and immediately stop the war crimes of the Israeli regime. If they place the statements of the official and military authorities of the Zionist regime, of which more than 62% are children and women, and may mean 17,000 civilians completely cutting off water, electricity, fuel, food, and medicine to a population of several million, and preventing any effective assistance to them, and brutally and extensively destroying residential places, mosques, churches, hospitals, and infrastructure facilities, have been carried out completely deliberately and with an intent of revenge and collective punishment, which are explicitly prohibited under international law. And leave no room for doubt that these actions are a clear violation of international law and a clear example of the crime of aggression and war crimes, and also crime against humanity and genocide. Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen, the, the actions of the United States too, which directly participates in this battle through financial and armed support, as well as direct military action and effective political support, are a clear violation of the Charter and and international legal obligations of that country, and, and as a result, hold it internationally responsible. In addition, while the United States itself is actually, and in practice, and directly involved in committing crimes against Palestinians, it is not in a position to invite others to exercise self-restraint and refrain from spreading the war. Therefore, we, we strongly warn against the uncontrollable consequences of the unlimited financial arms and operational support by the White House to the Tel Aviv regime, which have led to the expansion and added to the severity of the bombardments of the civilians and the Palestinian women and children in Gaza and the West Bank. The current developments in Palestine also clearly prove that the only result of any normalization of relations with, with Tel Aviv is tantamount to ignoring the legitimate and historical rights of the Palestinian nation. But any kind of normalization of ties with the Israeli regime is doomed to failure. Preventing the escalation of the Palestinian situation, especially considering the current turbulent and tumultuous conditions in different regions of the world, is a global and collective responsibility. We on our part are ready to play a more serious role in this field in line with our recent efforts in order to restore peace and security in the West of Asia. In this line, the leaders of the Hamas liberate, the, the leaders of the Hamas liberation Palestinian movement have voiced their readiness to release the non-military prisoners to us, and the Islamic Republic of Iran stands ready to play its part in this very important humanitarian endeavor along with Qatar and Turkey. Naturally, the release of the 6,000 Palestinian prisoners is another necessity and responsibility of the global community. Mr. Mr. President, in conclusion, I would like to thank the positive and realistic positions of the UN Secretary General, His Excellency Antonio Guterres, and his efforts on the ground for sending humanitarian aid to Gaza and stopping, immediately stopping the war. I would like to emphasize that it is expected from the United Nations to employ a strong terminology and under the seventh chapter of the United Nations Charter, force the Zionist regime to immediately stop its war crimes, genocide, and the mass killing of civilians, and provide other grounds for the full realization of the Palestinian nation's right to self-determination. This is, of course, the inherent duty and obligation of the United Nations, which has been delayed for decades for the afforded reasons. Now, we all expect the current meeting of the General Assembly that has been held to delve into the Gaza and Palestinian crisis. We expect it to pass a strong resolution, which is effective and influential by the General Assembly of the UN, that will lead to an immediate stop to war crimes against Gaza, and the lifting of the human blockade, and, and the extensive sending of the humanitarian aid, and stopping to the forced displacement of the residents of Gaza. Thank you for your attention.
For Foreign Affairs of the Islamic Republic of Iran, I now give the floor to His Excellency John Axelbrand, Minister of Foreign Affairs for Luxembourg. Your Excellency.
President, at the outset, Luxembourg would like to thank you for convening this resumed 10th extraordinary emergency session of the General Assembly. Unfortunately, war continues to rage in the Middle East. The risk of a regional escalation is very much real. And yet, the Security Council... And yet, the Security Council has not yet managed to shoulder its responsibility by adopting a resolution on the situation, and this owing to vetoes cast and divisions within the Council. Against this backdrop, it's important for the General Assembly to address this issue, as well as for all member states who wish to do so, to be able to take the floor. Regional peace and security as well as international peace and security are at stake. President, as I already said at the Security Council during the high-level public debate convened by Brazil the day before yesterday, nothing can justify the atrocities committed by Hamas terrorists and by Islamic Jihad targeting Israeli civilians on the seventh of October. Nothing can justify these barbaric acts which shook the world. We condemn them in the strongest possible terms, just as the United Nations Secretary General did earlier. Luxembourg would like to unequivocally reaffirm Israel's right to defend itself within the framework of international law. Having said that, I would like to refer to what President Biden said. He called on Israel not to be guided by rage, recalling that the United States committed errors when responding to the September eleventh terrorist attacks. Israel must act in keeping with international humanitarian law and must also ensure the protection of civilians. The people of Gaza are not Hamas. It should not, they should not be held responsible for crimes committed by terrorists. The people of Gaza should not be subjected to collective punishments. The UN Secretary General called for a de-escalation and for a humanitarian ceasefire. To begin with, humanitarian pauses should be established. These pauses could eventually lead to a ceasefire. This would allow for the delivery of emergency humanitarian assistance. It would also facilitate the immediate and unconditional release of hostages, and it would also help to ensure the safety of the civilian population in Gaza. This would save lives. Too many lives, too many civilian lives have already been lost. Rapid and unsettled humanitarian access must be reestablished without delay. We welcome the first deliveries of humanitarian assistance to the people living in the Gaza Strip over the last few days. We thank the Secretary General, Egypt, and the United States for facilitating the secure passage of these goods. Nonetheless, the people of Gaza need lasting humanitarian assistance, humanitarian assistance which would cover all the people in need. To date, emergency deliveries of assistance excluded fuel, and yet fuel is absolutely vital for hospitals to operate as well as for the desalination of water. United Nations facilities and all hospitals, clinics, schools, all humanitarian personnel, none of the above, none of them should ever be targeted by parties to a conflict. UNRWA, which is currently providing shelter to six hundred thousand people in the Gaza Strip, as well as other humanitarian agencies in the field, urgently need to receive urgent support so as to discharge their mandate. As for Luxembourg, we've decided to contribute two point five million euros, an additional two point five million euros, to humanitarian efforts in Gaza and in the region, in particular, supporting UNRWA, the World Food Program, the International Committee of the Red Cross, and the Office for the Coordination of Humanitarian Affairs, OCHA. This emergency assistance will bring our total support to roughly twelve million euros. That's for the year twenty twenty-three. The conflict which began on the seventh of October has resulted in over six thousand lives lost in Israel and in the occupied Palestinian territory. Hundreds of children have been killed. Thirty-eight UNRWA personnel have also lost their lives. I'd like to pay tribute to the heroic work being undertaken by all humanitarian actors out in the field. They're braving every danger to tend to civilians affected by this conflict. In particular, I'd like to pay tribute to the ICRC. Its teams in Gaza are working in particularly testing conditions. I draw in the ICRC's call for the upholding of international humanitarian law by all parties. President, I visited Gaza on a number of occasions since I became minister in two thousand and four. For years now, Gaza has been an open-air prison. The living conditions there are extreme. Civilians in Gaza are suffering doubly. First of all, from the Israeli blockade, but also the bombing, and also because Hamas is using them as human shields. There is a serious risk of this conflict being transformed into a regional inferno. And this applies also to the West Bank, where we've seen an increase in settler violence and the forced transfer of Palestinian communities. Both of these have reached alarming levels. We must absolutely avoid any spillover of this conflict. In order to do this, we must work, um, the international community must work in conflict and with all the main actors in the region. The international community must urgently restart the Middle Eastern peace process and pay it the attention it deserves. The Day for Peace in the Middle East Initiative, which was held here in New York in September, can be viewed as a first step in this direction. Luxembourg remains committed to a peaceful resolution of the Israeli-Palestinian conflict, which would uphold Israel's right to security all the while also respecting Palestinians' right to self-determination and to dignity. A just, lasting, and comprehensive peace based on the two-state solution within the nineteen sixty-seven borders, with two democratic states living side by side and maintaining the status quo in the holy sites in Jerusalem. This is the only viable path to breaking the cycle of violence. President, this is the path we must commit ourselves to in the name of our common humanity, the humanity which we share with Israelis and Palestinians, with Palestinians and Israelis. Thank you.
I thank the Honorable Minister of Foreign Affairs of Luxembourg. I now give the floor to the Honorable Minister of Foreign Affairs for Guatemala, His Excellency Mario Aldo F. Bucaro Flores. Your Excellency, the floor is yours.
Señor Presidente. Mr. President, we are participating in the resumed tenth resumed emergency special session at a time of profound sadness and pain for humanity. And we would like to express our most sincere condolences to the many victims. We stand in solidarity with the families, and we demand the release of the hostages, amongst whom are babies, children, women, and people of advanced age. This General Assembly cannot forget that the crisis that we are currently facing is triggered by atrocious terrorist attacks brought on by the Hamas terrorist group on the seventh of October, which have impacted both Israelis and Palestinians and people of other nationalities. It's caused death, damage, suffering, and destruction. It has also created a humanitarian situation of enormous proportion. We would also express our solidarity with the humanitarian workers who attend this grave situation and present our condolences to those who have lost their lives in the exercise of this noble function. Guatemala reiterates its condemnation, the most energetic terms, for the terrorist attacks committed by Hamas against the State of Israel and its civilian population. Hamas is confusing the Palestinian cause with justification of terrorism. And this is a very serious moral and strategic error, both for the Palestinian cause and the efforts that have been undertaken thus far in order to bring peace in the territory. We also condemn the attacks of the terrorist groups Hezbollah on Israel in breach of the resolution that establishes the blue line, which is the border between Israel and Lebanon, and which has cost the lives of civilians, both Israeli and Palestinians. Today, more than ever, it's worthwhile to recall the words of Golda Meir. And she said, "If the groups that are in favor of Palestine were to lay down their arms today, there would be no more violence. But if the Israelis were to lay down their arms today, there would be no State of Israel." End quote. Mr. President, it's necessary for this General Assembly to recognize that it is the right of the State of Israel to self-preservation and to defend its people, given this terrifying context. The lack of this recognition will not contribute to seeking dialogue, peace, and security in the region, and especially for the world. To the contrary, it puts all of mankind and humanity at risk. This General Assembly should act in order to reduce polarization and to discourage action and speech of hate. And the only way to do so is to stand united altogether against terrorism, clearly and unequivocally condemning the actions of Hamas and other terrorist organizations with extremist and violent ideologies, and demand also from them that they cease their practices of putting arsenals and terrorist infrastructures in the basements of hospitals, schools, and religious centers, which then undermine the protection of civilians and use them as human shields. Given this catastrophic situation, which has created this terrible conflict, we are pleased to learn that humanitarian assistance is reaching people, and we urge acceleration of the pauses. But at the same time, it needs to be done carefully and verifying that these pauses are not used unduly by terrorist groups to commit new acts that would affect the civilian population and worsen the situation. For the United Nations to effectively exercise its responsibility in the area of prevention and resolution of conflict that affect international peace and security, be it through the Security Council or the General Assembly, balanced resolutions need to be adopted that take into account all elements of the situation. And that would include, in this case, Israel's right to legitimate defense and safeguarding the peoples of Israel's right to self-preservation. We are in time to save lives and to promote dialogue and negotiation between the parties to achieve generalized peace based on the vision of two democratic states, Israel and Palestine, be able to live side by side in peace. It is vital to recall that the State of Israel has the sovereign right to protect its citizens and to guarantee its security. And that element is absent from the draft resolution presented before this General Assembly. And for that reason, Guatemala will vote against against this resolution. We urge all member states present here to consider doing the same. Thank you.
I thank the Honorable Minister of Foreign Affairs for Guatemala. I now give the floor to Her Excellency Rednor Estrani Proussandri Masoodi, Your Excellency, Minister of Foreign Affairs of Indonesia. Your Excellency.
Bismillah, rohman, rohim. Mr. President, I'm standing here not only as the Foreign Minister of Indonesia, but also as a woman, a mother, and a grandmother. I plead, stop the killing, protect the civilian, let in the humanitarian assistance. Use your heart. Use your heart for justice and humanity. Mr. President, countless time have we stood in this hall to relieve the plight of our Palestinian brothers and sisters? Countless time have we asked the General Assembly for emergency session on the fate of the Palestinian people? Countless time have our hope been crushed due to narrow political interests? The world seems divided in different realities, as if there is a refusal to see the catastrophe in Gaza. The fact is, attacks and killings continue to take place. Yet, amid such a large number of victims, the Security Council failed to take action, decisive action. Two days ago, we reminded the Security Council of their moral obligation to save the lives of innocent people. Bring humanity back in the Security Council, and humanity must come first. Mr. President, my presence here today is to defend justice and humanity, to defend justice and humanity. Indonesia condemns in the strongest term Israel violence against Palestinians, against hospitals and places of worship in Gaza. Indiscriminate killings, kidnapping, and collective punishment of civilians must also be condemned because it is inhuman and against international law. This session must rise to the occasion where the Security Council failed to do so. The General Assembly must prove that we, the people of the United Nations, believe in the dignity and worth of human lives. In this regard, a three-plus-one concrete steps that we should take. First, stop the aggression to prevent more civilian casualties. The General Assembly should demand an immediate, durable, and fully respected ceasefire. We must be able to avoid future recurrence of the atrocities. The General Assembly should call for accountability, including the establishment of an independent commission of inquiry to investigate this horrifying humanitarian situation. Second, ensure humanitarian access and protection of civilian. I call the General Assembly, together with relevant UN agency, to step up efforts in providing humanitarian assistance in Gaza. We must continue to support the effort by the UN Secretary General and key countries to allow humanitarian assistance to take place. With the destruction and human suffering in Gaza, ten, twenty, one hundred trucks loads of humanitarian goods just not enough. Therefore, the General Assembly must call for an immediate unrestricted and sustained humanitarian aid. For our part, we will triple our voluntary contribution to UN-RWA and call on the international community to support the UN-RWA. Indonesia is also committed to send humanitarian assistance. Third, reject the forced transfer of civilian in Gaza. Colleagues, people should not be forced to move against their will. The call to evacuate the areas of North Gaza adds to the devastation of continuous bombardment of homes, blockade of electricities, gas, fuel, water, and years of collective punishment. This is a crime against humanity. The General Assembly should call for the stop of these evacuation orders, protect civilian, and ensure their safety and well-being, in particular, children, and allow their safe movement. Mr. President, my final point, there will be no peace until we solve the root causes of the conflict. There will be no peace until we solve the root causes of the conflict. Resumption of the peace process to realizing the two-state solution is a must. We must stop the systematic effort of the occupying power that may leave nothing left to be negotiated or no one left to negotiate with. We must not allow the Palestinians to have no other choice but to accept injustice for the